They're just like, I don't know.
No, like you said, you would have had your car. We use things that we we love things that we should do and we use things that we should love.
Who wrote that? You didn't write it. Where'd you read that? Uh, I wanna know what book it is.
I love my car, it's always. It costs me money, that's why. You're right.
Yeah, they would take care of us. And if I was.
Thought you were gonna have some people here.
One more minute.
One more minute. Don't hit record.
It's too nice out, I almost didn't come back.
I did, like, uh, I went for a while, I was like, trying to hurry. Let's see, I'm hot, let's see, time.
Hey guys, um, opening exercise, the call and orders have a stand for the bled in the sun.
The bled is to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every heat and justice for all.
We're here for the caucus meeting on Monday, April fifteenth, Dax Day, so Steph, would you call the rule?
Yes, Mr. Rannan?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Here.
Mr. Bedler?
Here.
Mr. Cameron?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mary Lysia?
Here. Under announcements, we have the minutes of April fourth, twenty twenty four, council meetings. It will be provided to you by email prior to the April eighteenth meeting, Thursday night. Under presentations, we have three. The E L M program of Mr. Paper, I don't see him, I see Mr. Lynch here. First building, building parking garage, Mr. Lynch, would you step to the microphone and give us your presentation?
Good evening, everybody, hello everybody.
Go on, Mr. Paper.
Paul?
You know, I'm here on behalf of the Human Services Center. Most of you probably know that we purchased the old library on North Street. Our intent is to put about fifty of our employees into that structure. And they're good paying jobs, these are mostly college educated. Well paid individuals with benefit packages. Our problem is, is there's not a lot of parking. They're mostly in the building during the day, maybe not all at one time, but between over fifty, I would say there's always thirty five inside the building. Once we get the employee staff. And we need some parking. The parking garage is not too ideal for us, it's mostly ninety nine percent female employees. They don't feel safe inside the garage, and rightfully so, if you've been in there and seen the problems that's been happening over inside the garage over the past several years, I understand their concerns. We'd like to do something with the parking lot next door, I know there's others offers for that parking lot. We have a couple proposals for you, one, we'd like to take control of it once the demolition of the first mayor building is complete. That means the site will not be completed, it will just be a vacant block, mostly dirt, some parking. And we would then take it at that point, and we would put in the parking lot, the green space, the lighting, and the landscaping, and our concern is not so much that we control it for ourselves, but that it is a parking lot that our employees could use, we would leave it open twenty-four seven for other people who want to use that parking lot. I also see that there's people that wanna do a fifty-two or fifty-three million dollar project on the site. I think that's smoking mirrors, I don't think that's gonna happen, but if it were, we would enter into an agreement with it whereby we would start and trade for that part of that property to that investor if he could obtain that type of financing for that type of project, and that would be good for everybody. That's where we at.
How many spaces are you, are you thinking you're gonna need this?
Like I said, we're gonna have fifty people, I I don't even know, I can't tell you 'cause I measured the entire dimensions of what would be there once the building is demolished, how many parking spaces could be placed there, given the fact that you want to do some green space on the site also. But, you know, if we could get fifty parking spaces there, that's more than enough for us, and then that would allow other people to park their car today. Because we come and go, some of the people are up in the road and they come back in again. It depends on what departments they're in, there's four different types of departments inside the building. So we don't, even though we have fifty people, they're not there all at one time, but for some reason they're whole, some sort of meeting.
What they need is your spots for your people, so, you know.
I don't even think we need to do that even, I I think that we would just utilize the parking lot as well as anybody else, I I don't think of a big demand. The people across the street in the old temple building, those that live in the apartments will probably use it at night when we're not there. Those that wanna do, you know, the banking or whatever, it's just gonna be in and out real quick, I don't think they're gonna take a lot of spaces either during the daytime. You know, I I've seen articles about the barber who wants parking across the street, that it'll be his concern, I mean, he gets one or two at a time, I don't think that's gonna interfere with anything.
What would it take to make the, uh, the parking garage more appealing to your, your employees?
There's not a lot of my employees, and I I wanna talk to the females, I I don't even know one male that actually worked inside the building at this time. But none of the girls wanna have anything to do with that parking garage, and I know you could say, well, fence it, well, gay that I don't think that gives them a warm and cozy feeling when you see what walks around downtown. Well, most, probably everybody's younger than I am, I can remember the days when it was nice downtown, since when we came as a kid, everybody came downtown. But the demographics was completely different. I mean, the people that you see downtown now, they weren't born here, and they didn't go to school here, they didn't go to school with me, or not most of you that are from here. They're not nice people, they came here for the cheap rent and the quick benefits, and they're they're just not the best people that you want, I mean, you need to change that demographics to make it safer downtown if you wanna get.
Paul, would you, would you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd say updated lighting, more security, that would be sufficient enough?
I I really don't think so, 'cause even as it is, our, we have girls that park on the side now outside the garage, just outside our building. They get a closet in the morning, there's people in the shrubs and hide in the shrubs, this is seven o'clock in the morning. It it's not nice downtown, and I've never seen it where young kids are walking around homeless. I remember used to older people that have kind of given up on life, walking around homeless, but now we got twenty and thirty year olds walking around in pajamas at seven, eight o'clock in the morning downtown. I've never seen anything like that. And they see that, I mean, and you know, they see our clients too, and they know.
That's why we have Chief Kuma, Kuma here, we're going to put an officer downtown soon enough, right Chief? Walking around. I'd like to put ten down there, actually.
No, you have a good chief, I can tell you, very good take to listen, I think he's gonna do a good job, but it's not even a pro- a problem that you cause as as a group here, I think the biggest problem was the housing authority, that's controlled by the county, and they've done nothing with that for years and years and years. They need to take control of that, you could eliminate them, you can convert them to elderly, but you gotta quit housing people from out of town that have drugs, alcohol, and mental illness. You're you're attracting people you shouldn't attract to a city if you wanna succeed.
It's not a Newcastle problem, it's a, it's a countrywide problem.
Well, it's a lot, you say that, but no much lot, you're in a Beamer, they don't have it, you're in a Volvo, they don't have it. Nobody has this type of uh, demographics like we do. This was the best.
I spent a lot of time.
This was the best city in western Pennsylvania when I grew up, not so worse. Police surpassed Feral and Eller Club, all the bad ones when I was young have improved, we've gone downhill, our murder rate's worse, our crime rate's worse. And it's the housing authority, the low income housing.
I spent a lot of time in downtown Youngstown, and I see a lot of homeless down there. You know, obviously I have a place in Florida, even down in downtown Clearwater, downtown St. Pete, I see a lot of homeless there. This isn't unique to Newcastle, I don't believe that, I don't believe that. I believe we have national emergency, go to Seattle, I have a good friend.
I've been to Seattle, I understand what you're saying, most of the demographics, I understand that. We we become very.
Let me ask you this, Paul, let me ask you this. What's your target date to opening the, the old library complex?
We already have a lot.
What's the name of the building now?
We've not, we haven't what named it. We'll put a sign up eventually, just Human Services.
What's your target date to be up and running here?
Well, we have fifteen people already working there.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, and we're gonna move another ten or fifteen over here within the next few weeks.
So, for you to be finished with the construction, are we looking at six months, seven months?
Well, we've already renovated half of the inside of the building, and the other half we've already started on. I mean, it goes pretty quick, I mean, we're talking months or fucking years.
Are you talking months?
I mean, by the end of the summer, we'll be complete with what everything we have to do.
With the people in there and everything? Okay, very good.
Paul, you were redevelopment authority, county has time to do that.
Yes, yes. Let me just tell you this, we got, we got fifty jobs, we can go anywhere with those fifty jobs, we don't have that much money, but we can move, we can move.
We know that, Paul.
Our employees should be comfortable, if I was coming here from Cleveland, and you didn't even know my name, and I said I'm bringing you fifty well paying jobs with benefits, you'd open your doors and give me anything you had, take this, take that, here's a grant, here's free money, you're my only mind not asking for anything, I'm telling you, we'll make the improvement to the parking lot ourselves at our cost, and let everybody else use it.
Right. Mr. Lynch, just one thing. Would you be open for us to get, you know, maybe an architect or something that could help us reimagine that garage and bring it to you, and then you can see if this is something viable that we could successfully implement? And the only reason I I ask you for this is that fifty, you know, reserved parking spaces in that garage will change the dynamic completely of it. Because then then fifty people will be using that garage continuously, giving other people the security that they will use it as well. And again, I I obviously wanna be sure that the ladies in your department are safe. But before we proceed with any sort of development, any other site, would you just give us a chance to present to you something that can be appealing and can be safe for human services, and then a partnership with you guys would be, I mean, I would say, something very.
Let me just tell you this, and you speak to that. Take two things, the guy from Cleveland, here with fifty jobs, he tells you, no, I wanna go over there, you let him go over there, I'll meet you in our class, I'm not sure why. But, that being said, it's not me you have to talk to, I talk to the girls that work in the building. They're not comfortable with that. If you wanna talk to them, try to convince them, that's why I can set up a meeting with them, they're not comfortable, I'll tell you why. Almost every single night, somebody tries to get into the library. We have to chain the back door, and they're in the, we have to go up under the roof every week or two and take off the wall with the concrete they put on the roof from the parking garage, so it doesn't back up our grounds.
No, I understand, and I I all I was gonna say is that, if we can reimagine the space so that we can use it, obviously, 'cause I I wouldn't want that structure just to sit there and collect more.
I know we're kind of stuck with that, and maybe, you know, when I was younger, if we had a parking garage, it would have been much safer. And you're stuck with it, it's not something that you would vote on today and say, let's build another one of those, 'cause it doesn't work in our head and environment, it's just not safe to do that.
But, what I'm, in general, if you could, if you could just entertain me, the still the, the concept of that site is still not fully like demolition, you know, so we wouldn't be able to move forward with any, any, anywhere, and, you know, either back or forward. But the same is that, while that's getting kind of done, would you consider, or would you just humor the opportunity for me to kind of, maybe, show present something that could be appealing for you and human services, because again, I'm like, I'm telling you this again, I I understand that you want the space and you'll see that this can be functioning, and if it's not, then it's not, and then we move over.
Let me just tell you this, the whole block you see over there, between Mercer and Highland and Falls Street and Grant Street, that's all ours. All those house on Grant Street, we renovated that, the Red Cross buildings now better, almost for veterans. Even had the corner here of Mercer Street, that's ours also, and we cleaned all that up, and we're demolishing the U R building, we've already given all the contracts out, that should be done within thirty days. What we intended to do there was put in a park with an amphitheater and and complete the entire park, to make it look out decent, it would have walkways and benches and trees and stuff. In the meantime, we own that parking lot, that catty corner from Dunkin' Donuts. The kids would much rather park there and walk to the library and park in the parking garage, just go next door, that's all bad it is.
Can I, can I just ask one question, I think we're getting a little off topic, because we do, at this point, it's not with us, the property's not with us, but it, with all these issues that you're having, are the police being called and we're making reports? Because I'm a little concerned that you're bringing up a lot of issues, but I'm not sure, are we actually calling the police department, making them aware so they can address issue, or?
You know, I, we have probably the best police force we've had in a long time now. You got a great chief, you got a lot of great officers, I'm not making fun of any of them. But I own a lot of real estate. There are people inside my buildings every single night inside the city. And I have a lot of property everywhere, it's not even said they don't do that in Union, they don't do that in Shandale, they don't do it in Shenango. You have so many homeless, so many people of low income that just, they break in everywhere. You you see, I mean, he could probably give you a better estimate than I could do, they can spend all night just filling that. And if they break in, they wanna steal coffee, or they wanna steal it every night. And it's right downtown, I own the post office on the Diamond. They're all, they're in there every night.
I think Paul, he chased a couple out.
Yeah, yeah, but you can keep on doing that forever, you saw one guy die when the hotel burned down, it was out because he was staying in there.
Well, we certainly know, we certainly know that issue, we certainly know that, you know, and and you're right, we, and that needs to be addressed. I think what Eddie's asking is, is that if we did a renovation of the parking garage with, I mean, a complete renovation, with security cameras, just fixing the place up, fencing it in, maybe even provide a security guard, would that, would that provide some relief to your ladies?
I I, my personal opinion though, if you wanna, I I can set up a meeting with them, and they can address it more clearly with you with their opinion.
Well, eventually, we do on the parking garage, and and, you know, what, whether anybody parks here or not, it's incumbent upon us to fix it up eventually anyway. I don't think there's any question of that, right Chris? I mean, eventually, we're gonna have to do that.
We got three people parking.
It's ours, it's our responsibility, we can't let it continue to deteriorate. So, eventually, regardless of what happens there, it's gonna be incumbent upon us to fix it up anyway. Go ahead, Chris.
Now, I was just gonna speak to that, we did provide a proposal to council, you know, last year, but with the demo of the first mayor building, we just decided to hold off until that building come down, just in case something catastrophic did happen and we destroy our investments.
Secure that out.
Lead to the west, but we're, you know, we're an anticipation group, for that building to be down, will give us significant space to be able to, you know, secure that property with the, with the cameras, fencing on the first floor, gated entries on the back way, so people can't enter from the alley, and then securing the front with either better cameras or some type of gated. Uh, the ideas that have been passed around were working with the local business in downtown and individuals that wanna use the spots to have a fob system for entry and exit. Um, the property wasn't in significant use just before COVID happened, you know, I mean, the place was fully rented out. Are almost like three quarters of the way leased out, but just COVID happened and, you know, we had over three hundred, four hundred bit, or employees leaving downtown, so it's not too long away from, you know, that point, it's just finding an opportunity to get folks back in there um, and utilize the space, but again, I think this is a, at this current moment, it's not our issue, I attended the meeting on in March with the R D A, they, they have title of the property for the first mayor property, and they're gonna be hearing proposals, that's their job, they so you'll be given another proposal there potentially, and we will have to do the same um, with our original proposal with the county, because the property is currently in the name of the R D A.
Any other questions in council? Paul, thank you so much, thank you for your commitment, and we will keep you updated.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and next item on the agenda, I do not see Mr. Paper here, and it's for department head reports. Uh, who wants to go first, Mr. Chalky, would I go first? Is Doug with you, or is Doug on his own?
I'm on my own.
Doug's on his own, all right, Doug, you stand.
This is the first quarter report for the Newcastle Code Enforcement Department. Activity range is from January first of twenty twenty four through March thirty first of twenty twenty four. The activity report totals for the code department, we had twenty-five hearings that quarter, we had ninety-six citations that were issued, five condemnations, three consent of demolition notices signed, three property emergency demolition notices were sent out, twenty-three intended demolition notices were sent out, twenty-one property regular four month repair demolition notices were sent out. We had five hundred and eighty-two initial property maintenance inspections. That included emails, uh, just drive by inspections and phone complaints from residents. We had eight hundred and thirty property re inspections as well. Three repository inspections, and we had one, one more issued in that quarter. So our total violation count was eight hundred and eighteen, and our total activities was six hundred and thirty-two. The department information um, for the quarter, the department is currently staffed with six full time employees, including the director. Code enforcement officers are responsible for enforcing property maintenance violations, issuing vacates and performing Act one twenty-one inspections on a daily basis. The code enforcement director is responsible for the demolition files and also Housing Code Board of Appeals hearings. So on January seventeenth of twenty twenty four, we had a Housing Code Board of Appeals hearing for one fifteen South Ray Street. Uh, was continued for ninety days with the agreement that the interior had to be totally rehabilitated along with the, with new windows, a new roof, siding around the exterior. We also had two twenty-seventies Fairmont Avenue on the same day, and the owner was denied her appeal to stay the demolition. That is currently on our demolition list. Uh, February twenty-first, twenty-four, we had a Housing Code Board of Appeals hearing at three oh four East North Street, and the owner was denied his appeal to stay the demolition, which is currently being appealed at the next level. On March sixth of twenty twenty four, we had one nineteen East Washington Street. The owner appealed that, two code violations that were withdrawn at the hearing due to the agreement made with them to gain access to the interior of the property, and we're still trying to get together to actually get inside that building, take some photographs, and see what it looks like structurally. Uh, eight twenty-seven Harrison Street was another, uh, Housing Code Board of Appeals hearing was held March sixth of twenty-four, and the owner, uh, the owner's representative was denied his appeal to stay the demolition. That property is currently been sent to R A R to be bid off for this next current demolition contract. One thirty-two Moody Avenue, uh, the attorney representing the bank was denied the stay of demolition, that's also on this current demolition list. March twenty-first of twenty twenty four, we had seven twenty Carlisle Street. Uh, that was continued from twenty twenty-three Housing Code Board of Appeals hearing. The owner's representative was denied the appeal as no progress was made, so that is currently scheduled to be demolished, it'll be going with our next contract. One oh three South Liberty Street, uh, this was a continuance from twenty twenty-three, the owner was denied the appeal as no progress had been made uh, to rehab the structure, and currently that property is gonna be appealed at the next level. And one sixteen Summit Street was a continuance from twenty twenty-three Housing Code Board of Appeals hearing. The owner was denied the appeal, uh, as no progress had been made to rehab that structure, and that's another one that's gonna be appealed to the common pleas level. The special projects that we're looking at, currently working on twenty twenty-four demolition projects with R A R, which includes fourteen city demolition, uh, city funded demolitions, four C D B G funded demolitions, and three Lawrence County redevelopment authority funded demolitions. Two of, two of the city demolitions will be reimbursed by the Lawrence County redevelopment authority. Three oh one Glass Street is another project, that's Shenango China. Twenty-five citations have been issued on that property, and we're waiting for a hearing date to be scheduled, uh, probably gonna be, uh, next month on that. And we're also working on demolition two seventeen North Mill Street, as Mr. Lynch had stated. They did get their funding, the contracts are in place, we're just looking at probably around the thirty day period, and that should be completed. As far as the Act one twenty inspection activity for the quarter, we performed one hundred and eighty-four, uh, Act one twenty-one inspections. And our current demolition, uh, bid list is down below, I I hit on some of the properties that were currently gonna be targeted for demolition, those that had been brought up to R A R, we're just waiting for a spec book to be released and, uh, the, uh, contracts to be awarded on that, and hopefully we can get that done within the next couple, month and a half or so.
Okay, we'll have council questions. Anthony, very good, thank you. Doug?
Okay, uh, this is for the first quarter for the zoning. Uh, we had six zoning hearing board of bill, um, agendas that we had, and then for the planning commission, we had seven meetings. The Act plan on zoning certificates, which is the zoning of the properties that are being sold in the city, um, there was a hundred and sixty-one of those that I did in the first quarter. And as far as the billing and construction permits, there was twenty-five for the first quarter, but those are residential and commercial combined. And usually, once April, May, June starts, we get more commercial in, it's mostly residential right now. Fences, garages, whatnot.
Questions, council? Thank you, Doug. Mike?
Good evening, everyone. Real quick rundown on the Newcastle Fire Department, we're fully staffed. The newest hires that we brought on there at the beginning of last month are doing very well, we have them scheduled in their base level training courses, uh, fire basic essentials of firefighting, emergency medical services, hazardous materials, so they're coming along nicely and they're fitting in well. Uh, as of right now, we're fully staffed, everyone seems to be pretty healthy. Uh, for the first quarter of the year, we did a total of eight hundred and fourteen incidents, uh, six hundred and twenty-nine of them were medical requests, the other hundred and eighty-five were fire requests. I'm sure you've seen the newspaper the last few days, we've had a bit of a rash of fires, two of them are suspicious of being investigated, the other two were completely accidental, so we're working with those homeowners to get them either placed or give them assistance that they need to get their residence or businesses back up and running. Um, as far as the equipment goes, I wanna thank everybody here, particularly Chris, Ted, uh, for getting the sale of the pumper done at the Union Township, that was a dire need for them, uh, they had a failing piece of apparatus. Were able to step in and sell them that at a, at a reasonable price for the market, um, and they couldn't be happier, right now they're in the midst of putting it into service, so on behalf of Union Fire, I'm thanking all of you for playing a part in that, in that design. We are currently waiting to hear back from Midwest Fire Apparatus about the ladder truck. Uh, that has gone out the bid twice and did not receive a bid on it, so we currently have companies marketing it to try and sell it for us. Their commission is very nominal, but they're well, they're able to get top dollar due to the fact that they know who needs that apparatus, so uh, we're waiting to get some results from them to see where we're at with the sale of that truck. As far as council committee goes, we had some pretty good discussion between Mr. Ritter, Mr. Ward, myself, uh, about the needs of the department, as far as it will be addressing through capital improvement, that would be a conversation for another day. Um, but we have some pretty good plans in place. As far as the, the fleet, we're in really good shape right now. We have some work discussion we'd like to have with you in capital improvement talks to maybe condense the fleet, consolidate some equipment and resources, make it a little more user-friendly. So we'll talk about that closer to budget time. On the training front, our people are working really hard at getting certified as investigators and inspectors. It's a conversation I'll be coming back to have with you in the near future, and put perhaps an ordinance or resolution in place to facilitate that process. There's more information on that to follow, but still, it's moving along very quickly, but it's moving along. As far as the rest of the department goes, I'm willing to answer whatever questions you folks might have. Thank you for you.
Questions? Mike, I do want to thank you for keeping us updated on the, on the emergency situation as far as the grain is concerned. We send us emails, we send it to everybody just to keep us updated on, on those, on the conditions, the potential problems that we could have.
I have to say, it's certainly working with these guys, with Mr. Heickel, Mr. Quimmo, making sure we keep tabs on the water levels and what's good, what's bad, what we need to work on. So it's my pleasure to help out, but these guys, they do a lot of the labor too, so it's a big team. I love working on the team.
Right, thank you, Mike. Any more questions, guys? Okay, thanks.
Thanks, folks, have a good night.
Okay, all right, Brian?
This is first quarter for public parks and recreation. We're still short-staffed, so I have an application that actually had CDL that I called, I haven't heard back today. But we'll be losing a non-CDL, as you guys well know, who was replaced by a non, another non-CDL person. So we're still three cool people down. On our end, we did take ownership of the front-end loader and the park truck, which many of you know I've been trying to get for a long time. So I really appreciate the support on the equipment. It, it makes a huge difference in the efficiency that we work with. We're out every day, as you know, this time of year, grass and, and potholes, you know.
Right, Brian, I was gonna ask you, not to interrupt, but I'm sure anybody's gonna chime in here. Yeah, pothole seems to be, right now, major issue.
Every year this time, I mean, we live in West Coast, yeah.
I mean, I called you for a few, and you guys went right to it. But I could call you every ten minutes, the calls that I'm sure we're all getting. So how do you guys do it? Do you wait for the calls that are coming in? When you see them, you just go out?
Like rainy days, we go around, I have my two truck drivers go around, and we just mark them, we got a huge list. Contrary to what a lot of people say, we do the work orders, we're responsible for ninety-nine road miles.
Right.
So, you know, we try to do the mains first with the higher traffic. You know, I, everybody has a curbside, I can show them one worse.
Everybody, I know.
So, you know, we're out there every day. Days like today, we stayed over, we ran the next air hot box. Tomorrow, we'll do the same thing. Snow, overtime was down, so we're trying to pick up, you know, from there.
But Brian, you know, East Washington Street seems to be really, really bad at this point, different parts. But we know it's gonna get repaid.
It's gonna get repaid from Shenango to the Caribbean Traveling Bridge.
Correct, correct. And, and obviously, so then, any other areas that, are, are you staying away from, from East Washington Street right now because of that?
Well, it's a state road, so we're only responsible from the city side of the bridge.
The city side.
So like in front of the, that's state.
Yeah, understood. So the main, the main part of downtown, we're responsible for. So.
What we did, we just went through.
I mean, I would think that that's a high, I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I would think that's the high priority of patch since it's traffic.
Yes, but we use the mastic down there, so we tried to cold patch it. You know, we just went through down there and hit the big holes, because we use them to come back through, use the mastic downtown. It's, if you saw in front of Butts, I mean, it really worked out there.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I talked to Chris, I mean, there's gotta be a long-term plan for down there at some point with the facade and the sidewalks and, you know, everything down there. And it cements, it takes a beating with the salt. Another thing is, our winters are changing. You know, the rain, you know, you have a sixty-degree day, it rain all day, and then the temperature drop in the twenties. So it causes massive, you know, the ice freeze and thalls constantly makes more of an issue than snow and ice cold weather.
Sure.
So, I mean, it, like I said, the, what we've paved over the last five years is crazy. People see that, I mean, there's an enormous amount of paving that's been done.
And I would play the devil's advocate of calls I get. Up, up in the east side area of East Washington Street, where we have the steel plates, obviously, you know, they're not even even to the road. Is that because of the paving that's going to occur?
They're doing, replacing the manholes. So they're going, I don't know why they're going it the way they're going it.
Yeah.
That's Foligno and it's state, that's their contractor.
It isn't even to the road.
Well, like the one by the park, they did it right on the spot Monday, and then moved down. But as they moved down, they've just been opening them up and putting plates over them, so.
Are they doing that because of the coming paving?
Correct, this is all work that's, they have, that's all the, you see all the curb cuts going up and down. They did Island Street today, but all those curb cuts are, they have to get done before they pay.
And, and another question I have, and that's why I saved you for last. Are red lights that are just hanging there for decoration?
Well, we're waiting for.
How long is that, Chris?
It's all.
Even the street, the red lights?
No, we talking these red lights right?
There's new red lights that they just have hanging.
Well, we had an issue because that's a, was a state grant, it's two different grants. They didn't get permission from Penn Power to put the double redundancy lights on their poles. So if you notice, we, our guys took the pole, the lights off the wooden poles because Penn Power wouldn't give us permission to use them. So we get to keep those because they were paid for by a grant. They approved Falls and Mercer, they approved the three lights in Mahoney Town. So those are functioning. This one got the meter put on Friday, so it's scheduled for sometime this week to be operable. North Street, now that all the lights are down, I will call on the Penn Power to see if we can move forward to getting those meters put on. So once Penn Power puts the meters on the, the new control boxes, those will all be.
Oh, those new lights on those poles will be?
Well, those poles, all those lights on the poles are gone. So they're gonna put, if you look, all those new lights, except for the ones in Mahoney Town and the one where, you know, Falls was.
East Washington, too.
Yeah.
They're gone?
No, East Washington, they're gone. So you have Highland or Mill. It's Park, Wallace, and Mill and Falls. Those ones all didn't get permission for, from Penn Power. The two in Mahoney Town, the three actually, Mahoney Avenue, Cherry Street, and Bygina is there, are temporary because they're getting replaced with the black poles with East Washington Street. So that's another project, you know, it's coming, they're gonna be closing, Traveling Bridge at some point this summer for Verizon to start the removal of the lines. And we'll also be having from Wallace to the bypass, work starting because they're gonna pay all new lighting. So all the poles, three pounder, gonna be the black decker poles. But it's just, like I said, a lot of red tape. They, they skipped a step by getting the permission, Penn Power wasn't happy about it, made us remove them all. But to save money for the grant, we took them down for them. So if you look at all those ones I just mentioned, Wallace, Park, all those double redundancy lights, the lights that run the poles have been removed. But this one should be on, the meter's on, and I called Rodder Tech who does the install for the grant, and he's gonna try to schedule for this week. But those ones are, I mean, they're eighty years old. They literally have a dial in there that spins and clicks, and we're just, we ran through all of our parts and trying to get what's there existing working.
Really?
So that's why we went first to the flash and then to a four-way stop because of the issues we were having. But this one, I'm hoping, worst case, next week, but he's trying to get it on the schedule for this week.
My final question is, I, I know you're shorthanded, and, and I know you pay ten dollars an hour. Are we giving anybody who's interested in taking those jobs for ten dollars an hour? Any high school students that?
I have a few high school students lined up, and Career Link has one, once they get through the way they, they, they have to get approval for their payment, for how they get paid, and then get them.
Is that rate set by us or by Career Link?
No, we have two different, we have money to hire our own, and then we, we go through Career Link.
It's about ten dollars an hour on both sides?
Career Link's a little bit more, I think, they, they do, was it ten, twenty-six or something like that, ten eighteen? So I have a few like Tom Roseak.
Yeah.
I, I try to get, try to get.
Obviously, when, when I was in high school, we would, we would die for those jobs. Now, kids don't wanna do it, they don't wanna work.
I lost, I lost one of my best college kids. Shenango's paying fifteen dollars an hour.
Chris can't even get his son out there, what'd you say?
Shenango's paying fifteen bucks an hour for a part-time, which is a dollar more than my laborers make.
That's because they got that big development up there, they got money coming in.
Well, there's not as many of them either.
Maybe we can get Frankie obviously to give us some money. All right, any other questions?
I have a call. The electric for the Sign Out Cascade, what's, did you guys run that, or?
No, we're just, I'm actually meeting the sign company tomorrow, Chris gave me approval to go ahead and do that. So once he shows me and we decide exactly where it's going, we'll run that.
And then when you guys, when you have the guys riding around getting potholes, is that then put into the tool or the system, whatever we call it?
It goes in the work order, yes.
Okay, so that's all entered in there?
So like, in my report, you have the one that's computer-generated, that's completed work orders for first quarter.
Okay, so this is not open? This is all?
Those are all late? Yes.
Okay, so the open ones aren't part of it?
I can print it, but it's probably like another eighteen pounds, I should have. So that's completed its work orders.
Okay.
And that would be signs, patch, pickup garbage, whatever, and dumps.
And then the last one was on the golf course. So thirteen thousand in memberships, is that accurate compared to two thousand from last year? That just? Okay, that's what I wondered.
So we have, we're not getting more members by any means. We have more paying prior to that equal price.
Earlier?
Yeah, we have a lot paying more. Last year, a lot of people didn't pay until April, and it, sometimes that's driven by weather. Like if it's not nice the end of March, they need to pay until they can actually start getting out there. I think we've gotten four brand new motors a year. But our mouse is just creepy.
I think you just have a higher walk-up day-to-day give itself than you're gonna have anywhere else.
That's a, that's a definitely, we did take up other leagues and some outings with closures, but, you know, you still can only put so many people on courseable.
Yeah, right, yeah. Well, I mean, Castleville's gonna be crowded, we're gonna be crowded, just to be clear.
Yep.
Any other questions for Brian?
I just got one more update. I kind of talked to Dave walking up the steps, but some of you guys are aware of the flock program, Dave's aware, where they put the cameras up. So we had an issue at Bolinger, I talked to Pastor Rice, I think couldn't get through the ground. So we had a meeting Friday, Zoom call. So once they get it scheduled, we're actually gonna dig that camera up there at Bolinger. The only thing we have is a backhoe, they're aware of that, so our hole's gonna be bigger than what they need. But they're gonna get the cam, the camera placed where it was originally supposed to go, and then that, that'll complete that Bolinger, we'll have both cameras hooked up. So I know that was one of the issues that we're hanging out there, so.
Good, thank, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Chief?
Good evening, everybody. First quarter for Newcastle Police Department, a lot of personnel changes. We had Chief Salem and Sergeant Vigiano retire on January fifteenth. Myself replacing Chief Salem. Corporal Boswell was promoted to sergeant and was placed as the supervisor for Squad Two, replacing Sergeant Vigiano. We had an unexpected resignation of an officer. And after that occurred, we hired James Hyman, who's currently in the Allegheny County Police Academy, set to graduate in June. Myself and Lieutenant Brooks went down there last Friday to pitch our department test, which is coming up on April twenty-seventh, to the class down there. And so we're gonna be losing a couple more here within the next few weeks. So talking to him afterwards, Hyman, he said there was two that's probably definitely gonna come test, and he was talking some more about coming up for it. The new officers that graduated in December from that academy are doing very well. Officer Cunningham and Kerr have both been released in their counters manpower. And Officer Kraus, he's missed a little bit of time because of weekend drills each month. So he's just finishing up like this week his training. And come next week, he's gonna be on his own counters manpower. So right now, we're in full staffing. Officer Cobra unexpectedly put in his resignation a week ago. Saving on another job on law enforcement. So he's put in his two-week notice, and then he's gonna be using up all his vacation time, which will go through, near the end of May. So we're gonna be losing him, and then there's a possibility one of our officers might be leaving for State Police in June. So given this test in April, hopefully, we'll get some good applicants for it. Right now, I think I have five applications that were turned in. They're due this Friday for anyone that's gonna be testing with us. So I'm hoping we get some good applicants, it'd be great. If we get some with the Act One Twenty, we can start them immediately versus sending them to the academy, which their next class would be in July, so we wouldn't have them until December to start training with us. Corporal Holowich, who was recently promoted to sergeant, got accommodation from you guys for the baby iris homicide investigations that have occurred in this quarter. And equipment has been fantastic, we're really getting caught up as far as vehicles, that's probably coming up soon. We'll be hearing about that shortly. But we got that virtue of training simulator, which most of you have seen and some of you have used. That is a fantastic piece of equipment for us. So we're still working on getting familiar with it, learning how to operate it correctly. And we're establishing some training times for our officers and then work to rent it out to other agencies to come in and train, and we can use that money to put back in our training budget. So that's coming up here in the future. It was decided that Lieutenant Lagneese is gonna be receiving the Officer of the Quarter award. I'm hoping to have that luncheon this week, I'll let you all know if that occurs this week. And it's basically not so much what he did this quarter, it just accumulated a lot of things he's been doing. But recently, he got the Task Force Officer of the Year award through the DEA in Philadelphia. Him and another agent that have been working on a major investigation involving drug trafficking, money laundering. It's went through the United States, Canada, Mexico, other countries. The investigation's still ongoing. They arrested seven high-level organizational members, seized thirteen kilograms of fentanyl, is it a zine mixture, which is that new veterinarian drug? Forty-seven kilograms of cocaine, and they seized one point eight million in US currency and two fire lamps. And again, the reason we have him down there is for our drug forfeiture funds, which a big portion of that one point eight will be coming to our department somewhere down the line. But obviously, that's gonna be a great windfall for us. Also, over the last eighteen months, Lieutenant Lagneese has successfully procured two grants for us. And this wasn't without even anyone really asking him to do so, he's kind of going above and beyond when he sees an opening for something. One of them was for the MX nine oh eight mass spectrometer device. And basically, what that does is field test season narcotics, and it's almost a hundred percent accurate as far as what the results were, are for, and proceeding at least through the preliminary hearing, and telling you what the drugs are. And then also, he got the grant for our new dash cameras through Axon, ten of them. The final four just got installed last week, so now we've got ten vehicles with the new dash cams. They integrate with the flock camera system that's going up throughout the county. Just last weekend, Mr. Rosano witnessed our officers stopping a stolen truck out in New York that pinged on the flock camera system and alerted him. They pulled him over in Duncan Downs parking lot, arrested the driver, passenger throughout a, a container of marijuana in it. So those cameras are paying dividends in the integration because our dash cameras have license plate readers built into it, the software's built into it. And they join together with the flock cameras for giving just real-time information. It's, it's really gonna be a game changer. So based on, also, one more grant, I'm sorry. He bought, Lieutenant Lagneese got the Medical Marijuana Act Enforcement Project, which was two hundred twenty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. And with that funding, we're able to purchase two vehicles. One was Lieutenant Lagneese. One was Lieutenant Lagneese, which we already put in for, uh, and we're gonna get another cruiser. And it also covers the upfitting for lights and sirens of the, of the vehicles along with, um, ninety-one thousand basically in overtime reimbursement for this year and next year for different trainings. The narcotics guys went to that Pennsylvania Narcotics Officer Association Seminar two weeks ago. Uh, so they'll get, we'll get reimbursed for the funding for the hotels and all that kind of stuff. And then there's also money in there to have our officers go to, um, drug rec, drug recognition expert training. And basically what that is, is it's kind of the most advanced training you can do for DUIs and detecting, um, people that are under influence and narcotics. Um, so Officer Bergman is who we're thinking right now would like to get up to that point. Uh, he completed like the first couple steps of DUI training. I think he'd have to go to another schooling, have so many DUI arrests, which he's, he's doing pretty good. And then he probably be eligible to get into that training, which is a very intense and hard training to get through. But that grant would, um, cover the housing, the training costs and overtime associated with it. So basically, for all these reasons, we thought it was time to recognize Lieutenant Lagneese. A lot of our officers don't really know what he does because he's down in Pittsburgh with the DA full time. Um, so it's easy to kind of forget about him, but he is doing a lot for our department. Next up are stats, um, our calls for service were down a little bit first quarter compared to last year. Unfortunately, I don't see that maintaining, we've been getting pretty busy lately. But we were down about five hundred calls, uh, compared to last year for the first three months of the year. Our traffic and non-traffic citations, uh, non-traffics are basically about where we were last year. Our traffics are going up, um, and again, with technology, we're getting guys familiar with, um, what's called a track system. So basically, the citation information is entered into a computer system, it's automatically uploaded to the magistrate's office. So the guys don't have to write out the citations on the, uh, forms anymore, which the state did away with printing out paper citations. Um, we went to a printing company to get some made up just to have, but we're converting everything to electronically filing. Another step, which I'll be commenting for, is getting new printers put into the cruisers that'll print out the citations. Right now, we just follow them and the magistrates will send the people the information. Uh, but that's really going to help our guys, um, as far as if they see multiple violations, they don't want to get their hand cramped up writing tense citations, they can go in the computer and just do it within minutes. Criminal arrests, uh, we are up pretty good this quarter compared to the first quarter of last year. And, uh, with the fewer calls for service, that shows me that our guys are doing a good job, um, as far as handling the cases they're getting called to, making the proper arrests that are needed. We have a pretty young department right now, so we have a lot of good, young, aggressive officers that want to learn the laws, want to pursue different types of charges that a lot of the older officers don't even know are in the books. Um, so I've been real pleased with our staffing, with our younger officers and with the department as a whole. Budget, our expenditures are pretty much right on track for the first quarter and so is our overtime. So our expenses are pretty much where they should be. Any questions?
Counsel?
Yes, what can we expect in our K nine?
Officer Mann, I believe he's going May ninth, I think it is, for it's a five week training. So once that, probably off June, beginning, middle of June, we'll have, uh, K nine Tony. So we'll have K nine Frankie and K nine Tony.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I just have a question, uh, Chief Salem sent back in, I believe we asked for it in January twenty-three. Uh, I'll pay the fleet list, can you send it for us please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, counsel? Thanks, Derek.
Good, thank you.
We're very fortunate, we have a great staff here, great department heads, you guys, you guys go bump and be on, let's ask if you really appreciate it, guys do a great job, thank you. From counsel, thank all you guys. Okay, moving on. Other public comments, I don't believe we have. Okay, planning commission reports. Uh, the land development plan of asset reality and construction group incorporated. Uh, this is, requires, um, a resolution of city council. Council wishes to act on this land development plan at the April eighteenth meeting. A resolution will be prepared, will be prepared contingent upon store model management plan, which is, uh, will be approved by, uh, R and R Engineering Incorporated. So, um, we have to have a conditional use. Request meeting date twice here, two times for Stevens Hill Wilmington Avenue and Joseph Buffington on the three tenth Highland Avenue, age of four, I'm sorry.
These are both official leases, so I don't know probably long.
I mean, I really do bear this.
May, but your next round of meetings would be, um, May sixth, would be Parket.
So that would be May sixth at five thirty?
Do the five thirty.
Yeah. May sixth, did you say?
Yeah, May sixth.
Five thirty, okay. Okay, um, are we moving for a resolution on the, uh, plan, uh, development plan of asset reality?
Yeah, did you want that on the agenda?
If counsel concurs, yes?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Okay, moving on. We have no petitions to vacate, to vacate streets. We do have requests to bid replacement of Cascade Park dance hall carpet and flooring. So that will be the, uh, you're gonna put that out, Steph?
Yes.
That will be, okay.
That was in the budget, right?
Uh, there will be bids to be received in the open Thursday night for the, uh, sell of the scrap metal, right, on Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay, as from the efforts of Mr. Rosano. And bids open to refer to administration for the recommendation, we will have none. And the resolutions for consideration, repository properties. Uh, the attached, the first one we have is for reviews of special events contracts for services. A resolution will be needed to enter a contract with Ford Lawrence for the use of staff to assist in special events within the city of Newcastle. Uh, Mr. Bjork, would you like to address that issue?
Mayor, like the repository property, can you go back to that for a moment?
Sure, a second, right, as you understand.
That's at JCM Property Holdings, that's the one we carried over, um, from last time.
Are we talking about asset reality or are we talking about a different one?
No, JCM Property Holdings, this is the lot with the garage on it on Cretton Avenue. So they had put that in for the last meeting and they didn't turn anything in. So we, um, carried it over to this meeting, they still have not submitted anything. But you don't, the time's up, so you have to, so.
It'll be on the, on the, on the executive thrust to, to turn it down.
Okay.
To deny. Okay, Mr. Bjork.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. With us tonight's Asher the Pier, as you all know, Ashley stepped up last year under, uh, contract with New Visions and led a very successful parade. It was great to see, I'm sure many of you were there, I was there, participated, it was great to see East Washington Street lined with people, both sides from Kennedy Square all the way up to, uh, Riverwalk Park. And as you all know, we have the one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of the county this year, almost all of you were at the courthouse and heard our keynote speaker. We have, he detailed the rich history of Lawrence County, including the, uh, great many ethnic groups that make Lawrence County great today. Uh, I'm a strong supporter, but I ask counsel to consider approving the resolution to, uh, hire Ford Lawrence, who's now the employer of Asher the Pier, for her to work as a coordinator, uh, with many volunteers for the Lawrence County Ethnic Days, be held at Cascade Park, August thirty-first and September first, and for the holiday parade. I know there was some discussion about fireworks festival, I think that needs to be a separate issue and discussion, but I strongly support the Ethnic Days at Cascade Park and the parade downtown. Both of those events draw people in from around the county and even outside the county and highlight Cascade Park as a city asset and the holiday parade brings people in from everywhere in the county to downtown Newcastle. So I strongly support both of those events and I recommend hiring Ashley, I think she's a great person, but since she now works for Ford Lawrence, we need to actually get a contract with, uh, her employer for her to assist us. And final thing I'll say, it's capped at six thousand dollars. Speaking to administration, there are funds available from the prior Italian Day Fund that used to be held out at, uh, Cascade Park. And those funds can cover this and I believe the Ethnic Days event will, then will break even and more likely, uh, generate a profit to replenish that fund as well. So I think there's no, there's no reason budgetarily or otherwise not to approve the contract with Ford Lawrence, so, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Is this question, CDC involved in this or how, what is your role?
My role is, I was at the planning committee meeting, um, Mr. Listo, Mr. Rosano were there. For the Ethnic Days, I'm gonna serve in a role as a volunteer. The CDC obviously promotes community economic development, this is community development. We have events like this, this is community development, this is what makes Lawrence County a special place. So I would be working with Ashley in my role, obviously no additional compensation in my role as a CDC director and as a volunteer citizen of Newcastle, I'd be working with her to pull these events off.
Do we have a contract?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I don't, we didn't, we don't.
There's nothing on our stack.
I don't, I don't, I don't.
Chris, do we have, did we send the contract to everybody?
We had the original contract.
Right.
But any updated terms have not been brought in like this.
No, I know, but we still have the original contract, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, did we not, we gave it to everybody two weeks ago, correct?
Yes, it was even on.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna make adjustments and then it was gonna be a reset and that's lost, I heard.
Yeah, what type, well, what type of adjustments could you like? But we talked about, I mean.
Do we want to discuss this here?
Yeah.
Probably, that would work.
That's, I mean, you can, you know, it's, it's, it would be, negotiating contracts would be executed, but you, you can, oh, we can discuss a vote, but you don't have to.
What, what we discussed is the fact that we wanted to make those, the cap, the six thousand, it's not actually listed in the, in the whole contract. I thought that that was gonna go back to Ford Lawrence and then they were gonna bring it back with that type of wording. So that Ted can successfully confirm it and then, you know, we can move forward. I think that, that's what we talked about the last time. Is, am I correct or?
Is there a contract?
No, there's, no, the contract's the contract, it, it hasn't changed, it's six thousand.
And then the number two, yeah, and number two, well, it doesn't say cap. Remember, remember on the original contract, it's, it talks about Commissary Slocare, using X amount of time and then anything after that, we would have to renegotiate in regards to her rate. And it's fine because if she's working, she shouldn't be compensated. But I think that what we were discussing was the fact that we just need to have more clear expectations in regards to what the funding is going to be used. And then number two, we discussed that, um, in the contract, I don't believe I remember, but it was said that we were, it was only the heritage that.
It is.
But it's, it's been talked about that it's gonna be the heritage for the Ethnic Day and the parade, but that was not listed in the contract.
Now, while we talked about the, um, the fireworks festival, obviously there's an issue with the fireworks festival, Frank can lead you into, uh, that issue. But, um, again, this is at capped in a hundred and twenty hours and I can tell you that it's probably gonna be more than that, but, uh, Ashley will probably be working all weekends when she doesn't work with, um, Ford Lawrence. Um, I can't imagine it could be more than a hundred and twenty hours or six thousand dollars. Uh, the reason is being, is because, understand that Ford Lawrence is, she's an employee of Ford Lawrence. So she can't be lended to us with the idea that she's also going to work for our events. So obviously Ford Lawrence has to be compensated. So that six thousand dollars, not only does it pay for part of her wages, but it also pays for her healthcare as well.
And I, I agree, she should be compensated, but the, the issue was that the wording in the contract was supposed to be adjusted, if, if, if am I.
You're, you're correct, that would be between, uh, the new agenda going off for Thursday, I can offer to get you guys the information to request and, and talk to.
Because again, I have nothing against Miss Slocare, I think that she does do a good job, but it was the fact that, you know, if we're gonna move forward, we need to make sure that all, uh.
Yeah, I don't think we can, I don't think there'd be an issue for us to, uh, to reward this contract with it being capped at a hundred and twenty hours by Thursday.
No, I, I guess, I would, I, I would need to know what terms counsel is willing to approve and I can put those into the agreement.
From what I'm understanding, correct me if I'm wrong guys, that, that what you're concerned is, is that it's at a hundred and twenty hours and capped at one twenty, is that correct?
What's your impression of the, the holiday parade?
Yeah.
Because I mean, you bring up the holiday parade and saying it's for two, but you're saying it's only for one, so what's, what's the language in the, in the new contract?
The, the thing with the holiday parade, and Ashley's here, she can answer these questions as well as I can. But the holiday parade is probably going to be a, and, and I'm going off the top of my head here. It's probably gonna be a co-op agreement between Ford Lawrence and the city of Newcastle. I think last year it was a cooperative attempt between, um, um, New Visions and Newcastle for the parade, would that be correct, Ash?
So that's correct, last year it was with New Visions.
So.
Um, and I think even this year, New Visions does plan on trying to make an agreement on the parade because they typically took that over and have been doing that the last several years. It wasn't really a city thing, the city assisted with the planning as far as, um, loading the police officers for that day and closing roads, I mean, Brian Hekel was really very helpful in making sure that the roads were closed for us. Um, so I look at this as the six grand that you're discussing is specifically for this one event.
That's a little clarification, I think, where the misunderstanding is coming about because, you know, when it was pitched, it was talking about two events, but it's not. So I don't wanna move into a, a situation where obviously the city is expecting something from her as she can deliver because she was not aware of it, so, uh, I just wanna make it very clear.
But, but, but we are still kind of making, no, no, yeah, yeah. And I understand, like, the contract, you need all your, dot your i's, cross your t's on that. Uh, my intentions are to work just a hundred and twenty hours, which I think is more than enough honestly to put together everything that we need to do, including the volunteer hours that we're gonna be gathering from lots of volunteers, from what it sounds like. Just the first sit down that we had was very positive. Um, that leads me to believe this could even probably go smoother than the parade did for me last year. Um, so, and this is by far a much smaller contained area that we can control better than five streets, five blocks, yeah, thank you. And I do have pretty good feelings that New Visions will be seated with our, with our CEO to discuss planning the holiday parade soon.
And in regards to the time, the time span, because it's, it's August thirty, so from now on, it'll be four months of planning. We are confident that this is gonna be something that is going to be successfully attended and as well that we'll get the participation from those vendors that we're looking for, like churches and organizations.
Absolutely, typically whenever you go to planning an event for organization involvement, it takes three months, I would say, to get that all coordinated. To have a fourth month is even better because then we can reach out to sponsor opportunities. Um, gives a lot of people opportunities to, you know, highlight how they contributed to the community. So I think four months is more than enough time, honestly. Now, had I had six months, it would have been better, but this is fine.
And if I can interject here as well, um, you know, I, I do think time is a blessing at this point. You know, obviously we've had a meeting all over a month ago, we don't want those people to go away. Because they are ready to jump on board and I have a, a list of other people who want to jump on board as well. But, you know, this, I look at this as a business endeavor. And the reason being is, we're going to invest six thousand dollars in a stagnant account that has nine thousand in. So it's a stagnant account, so we're gonna invest six thousand dollars in the pool of soft with the potential of making a great deal more. Um, is it a risk or is it a risk? I mean, anytime you go into a business, it's a risk. Uh, but if you're asking me, yeah, should we risk six thousand dollars in a stagnant account with something that the city should be doing anyway, the market Cascade Park? Um, our idea at our meeting was to, uh, let the kids in free, charge five dollars for adults and a donation for parking. We believe, uh, that in two days, we believe we can generate some revenue and that revenue goes right back into that account. So if, if you're asking me. So if, if you're asking me, as a businessman, do I think it's worth the risk? I would say it certainly is worth the, worth the risk. But I think time is of essence. You know, I'd like to jump on board with these, with these volunteer groups that wanna do this, and I'm gonna keep them motivated. We haven't met with them in over six weeks. You know, they're probably wondering, scratch their head, what's going on? And I told them that, you know, we, we got this contract, we have to, we have to do. So yes, it's for, it's gonna be for one issue, it's going to be for $6,000 capped at 120 hours. And I would recommend that we put this resolution, we can clean up that language, put that resolution in front of council on Thursday night, so we can move. That's my take.
Also, Ashley, I just wanna just, when it comes to the event itself, do we currently have like a, like a, some sort of, I don't know.
A vision?
Plan, thank you, Mr. Locher. A plan in regards to like, what is the purpose of our, obviously, of our event? Because it, it should have an intensity.
Right.
Being the fact that we're gonna be doing something of that magnitude. Obviously, every event is to regen, reg, reg, to generate revenue. But if it doesn't, it's, it's, I, I understand, like you said, it's always a risk. But do we have a successful kind of plan of what we're going to be forwarding to? You talked about sponsorships, I also thought about that.
Yeah.
If we can reach out to like, big icons of this community, where we can offer a silver, gold, kind of like, you know, tier level, to see what they can bring to the table. Thank you, Mr. Locher, I still have for you, but.
No, and, and that's, and that's exactly where we would go with sponsorship. But there's also the opportunity to make money off of games, so that, you know, typically, people like to, you know, grow hoops, or.
Yeah.
You get a portion of that as well whenever we do events like this. So there's lots of ways to make money off of this event.
Food vendors.
Food vendors, whenever you're contracting space for food trucks, you know, they would pay a fee to be there. They make plenty more money on top of that. So I do believe that you're probably gonna pull out with more than just the cost of me being there, as far as income. My goal is really to make this one of those things that can happen year after year after year.
And that's what we want, obviously, we don't want it just a one.
Right.
Wanna, uh, but in regards to the plan, and I'm sure that you will move forward, is there a current plan, or are you gonna be developing a plan of what the event will look like?
So we had one sit-down meeting with kind of a, a very roundtable discussion of how we're gonna put all this together.
Okay.
I sat down a couple of weeks ago and put a calendar together to try to figure out how with the several different groups that we need to coordinate with, how I'm going to sit down with them for how long, which weeks, and all that, to get things moving forward. We had a blueprint kind of done of the space that we're going to be working in, in Cascade Park, to kind of see the electric options that we have for food trucks, sound options for the stage, where performers can be, where we could put rides if possible, all those details. So we're still at the very early stages of this, but there is a general idea of how we wanna continue moving forward, how we want this to focus about the different heritages that bring together and make Lawrence County unique.
That's awesome. And then also, I wanted to say, if in that case we move forward and we can definitely get this moving the right direction, could we schedule like monthly check-ins of where we're standing at? I think for two reasons. Obviously, council can be involved, so we know where we are, but the news actually, you know, records these companies, these meetings, so it would be a fantastic.
Advertising opportunity, I love it, yes.
It can just show that we are moving forward with this big event that is gonna happen.
Yeah.
So if we can do like monthly meetings leading towards it.
I'm happy to stop in and have a discussion and offer the opportunity to ask questions at those times as well. So, I mean, anytime my phone is available for you guys to call and ask questions.
And, you know, another part of this is, some of you guys saw the light show that Dante Udevici put on. You know, he's ready to move in that dance hall for that evening, to put a cultural heritage celebration within the dance hall with his light show. And you guys that were there saw what he was able to do on that evening, which is another great way to market our, our park.
It's very unique.
You know, I like to remind everybody that, I, I think it's incumbent, you know, as mayor, if you read the charter, it's incumbent upon me to put forward a lot of these humanitarian type festivals. I think it's also incumbent upon the city to offer that to its citizens. I think it does a lot, it goes a long way in improving the morale of, of our community. I'll remind everybody, in the last couple of years, through no fault of anyone here, there really wasn't anything at Cascade Park, you know, other than what individuals have done. And we have a wonderful asset there. Cascade Park is, is an extraordinary marketable asset. And I think it's important for the city to get involved and do things there, is my opinion.
We have some kind of cost analysis by Thursday before we go on this contract. I mean, obviously, that's separate, but from the city perspective, so we have $9,000 in this Italian festival account. Mr. Hekel said he's down three guys. How much labor is he and his department gonna use? Mr. Kummo's back there, so how much is the police department gonna use? Is this gonna be overtime? I, I'd like to have all that information and facts.
To, to do all that is going to be rather time-consuming. You know, it's, it, I, I think we can factor that as time goes on. I can't imagine that that cost will be enough to break the, the whole idea of having this. But that's going to be time-consuming, this is gonna delay her official start date and, and the contract. And we don't have that, that, I, I don't believe we have that time. This is going to be, I, I believe it's gonna take four, five months for us to plan and pull off in a professional way. For us to do a cost analysis to find out exactly, you know, well, what it's gonna involve with the police, what it's gonna involve with public works, I think that's going to delay it even more. I can't believe that that cost is gonna be that astronomical that it would parade us. I, I can't imagine. I believe that this thing can, can pay for itself. I believe it can pay for the police officers that we use as security, and for any overtime that Brian submits to, for us.
Yeah, I guess just when we talk about being a revenue generator, hey, we have to know if it can generate revenue, that's all.
Well, like I said, you know, this is a business endeavor. Businesses are, are a risk, it's just the way it is. But do, do I think that, you know, you're not gonna know until you do it. We can say you're speculating all we want. But, you know, until you do it, it's gonna give you a determination whether or not that it, it was successful. I'm willing to bet that it is, or else I wouldn't be sitting here pushing this thing. But again, you know, I'm, I'm advocating that we, that we move forward on this, on this contract. After we, we get the contract and get her started, then we can take, take a look at Chief, Chief Kummo and Mr. Hekel, and see exactly what's gonna be involved from that.
I just wanted clarification for administration, because I wanna make sure we address, you know, all the council's concerns. As from my understanding, this was just a standard, what we do probably 100 times in the summer in a county that takes place at Cascade. If there was, you know, the cost, we budget each year for public works and the police. They man events all through town, and set up and break down. So I don't, I wasn't under the impression that this was gonna be any, any different than any of those. But if you would like, I mean, we could do, like, in general, costs would be similar like Cascade of Lights. You know, we have folks going down there, putting garbage cans. We take deposits typically when folks rent the spaces for cleanup, which I believe is 150 or 125 dollars. But in terms of manpower, we typically don't get involved in, you know, the actual event itself. It's just easy to prep and, and, of putting up forces and cleanup and things of that nature. Yeah, 'cause I think at the one point, we did try to do a cost analysis for Cascade of Lights, and we recommended increasing the cost about 15 dollars an hour. But, you know, that's when you start to look at the manpower. But we actually put those lights, they decorated and set up all of that for Cascade of Lights, and these other type of events, we don't do too much of. Just wanted to, if that's what you meant, correct me, but I didn't imagine, I wasn't planning or we didn't have any discussion with the department to participate at that level. I mean, obviously, volunteers will be a part of it, bring your family, your friends, and your community, your churches, whatever group you're involved in, but it wasn't our intentions, or at least to my knowledge, to be involved in it.
So we wouldn't have like a police department there? You'd have security.
That's been submitted to me, usually it comes to.
That's what I guess I'm asking, like, you know, if we're gonna have a police department there, I would assume that would be part of the cost, because it, it's gonna be regular. Not saying separate from the event, but it's gonna incur cost, right? I mean, if there's police officers there, not on the streets, we're gonna have to pay overtime. But if you're saying there's not gonna be police there, then again, what part of the plan? I'm assuming it will be security for her to figure out. Well, um.
Just like the 50, back to the 50s, man, all of that, I mean, again, that was my understanding. I didn't anticipate asking, you know, have the police officers, you know, at the event, especially not on duty, if anything, it's FOP, you know, and that cost is covered through whatever proceeds that they bring in, or grand dollars that the, the event brings, or money that the event brings in. But again, nothing, usually what happens is comes across, my best is, like, the parade assemblage, use of alcohol, we sign off, I sign off on all of that information. Like, the back of the 50s, it's a contract. This one, this one here, while it's, you know, a city event, sponsored event, there was, that discussion just had to happen. And I, number one, didn't expect it to be that intel either to have police on staff at the, at the event. If anything, it will be, again, on the, on the budget side, to see how the event will be, you know, for, as security or.
Yeah, now that you said it, now I, now I would see, thank you. So if it's a city-sponsored event, and something does happen, are we gonna be held responsible if we don't have police there?
Yeah, I mean, there'd be obviously risks.
Yeah, you're at risk for everything you do, yeah.
Sure.
With the same liability, just for every part that we.
But back to the 50s, it's an event that we don't sponsor.
Correct. But in terms of property, still, I mean, city property, so we say like the Downtown Concert Series.
Uh huh.
You know, we're part of that, part of Angel Hassan, that's an event that New Visions have part of, the city years ago, to be a part of. I mean, there's, and there was an incident there occurred where a kid was climbing or something, and he, he got injured. So there's, there's the instance of something happening, I mean, anytime, but I don't, I don't foresee any other.
But I think, well, I think what the, what the council members asking is, there's obviously gonna be more liability, because. It's an.
Back to, right, well, back, back to the 50s, they're gonna have their own insurance to cover their event. And yeah, if something happens, this is our event, then it's.
So he would basically, he has liability.
Yeah, you, well, yeah, we have insurance policy governed that. But more so, you know, it would be, you know, as far as the cost analysis is concerned, we can take a look at the parade and see what the public courts pay, what they did. We can take a look at the, the commitment that the, that the police made too, during the parade.
Wouldn't the parade be different, because this is gonna be a two-day event, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it would be different, but, you know, as, as far as the, the intensity of the two events, you know, that parade was almost all day, and that involved probably, I would say, like 50,000 people. I don't think we're gonna raise those numbers. But, you know, I, I, as far as the security and insurance is concerned, I have to tell you that I got married at Cascade Park, I had 600 people there. It was for one day. I took out an insurance policy, and I paid two security officers at $100 each. That was my total cost, you know? So I think it's, you know, I, it, it, what, what you're asking, I understand, and, and, and I, and yeah, we're prepared for that. But, you know, if we're gonna be worried about that liability, then, then, then we can't ever sponsor any type of festivals or any type of events.
Oh, no, we should, we should, I, I think we should definitely sponsor, I'm just saying.
And something for us to be concerned about, sure.
We should have the police department there, because at the end of the day, it's, it's Newcastle sponsoring the event. So I, I just, you know, after, you know, Councilman Cameron said it, I, I thought about, oh, well, maybe you should. Yeah, we do have to think about that, because there should be someone there.
Yeah, and I think we can make that. So, and anyway, I, I, again, I was wondering, say, that we need to put this on for a vote on Thursday night, taking change of wording to cap it out at 120 hours.
I wanna make sure that I understand what the agreement's been prepared. It's gonna be paid $6,000 for a ma, for a maximum of 120 hours for the one event. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
All right, can we see the contract?
I will, I'll allow it, yes.
Ashley, Brian, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody, moving on.
See where we are.
The purchase request.
Oh, thank you there, David. Purchase requests. Pat's request for resolution to review consideration for Chief Kummo as follows. Chief was recently contacted by Charge State Motors and Device, add two, to 2024 Ford, Ford interceptors, police vehicles delivered and reserved for our department. Chief Kummo was aware that this was, was unaware that this was requested, but given the shortage of these vehicles, he's requesting to purchase one of them for $38,434. This is cost-star pricing and a very good deal. The payment can be made with forfeiture fines. Chief feels this additional vehicle is needed at this time due to removal of Unit 7 to be outfitted and uses a new K-9 vehicle, as our forfeiture account is currently self-employed, capable of coming to purchase and subsequent outfitting. Questions to that? Okay, moving on. Resolutions on the table, we have none. Ordinance for consideration, Article 155 Amendment to address outings at Sylvan Heights.
Yeah, I, I.
That's the cost, is that what this is?
Yes. The, there was some discussion about grandfathering historic large events at the golf course. So I believe, I don't know, if it's not in his package, it should have been, you should have it.
Grandfathering, you mean grandfathering the.
The price, yeah, so.
For?
For any, the, the way the amendment has been proposed is that a large event would receive a discount on the regular greenspeed.
Correct.
And a large event will be any event that's been held at Sylvan Heights for at least five years prior to, and then also continuing after 2020 golf season. And it has at least 100 participants every year of the event, and will continue to have a, at least 100 participants. And that would be in place until the ordinance is changed, as long as they continue to hold the event there in consecutive years.
Okay.
If that's what you want, that's what, that's how it's been prepared.
Yeah, the council, councilwoman. Ordinance, is everybody okay with this on Thursday? Any questions? Okay. Seems to be okay, okay. Okay, amendment to repository of property ordinance. This is concerning Ted.
Jonathan.
Jonathan.
Yeah, so, the council request, parent amendment to Section 1784.02. So this is bidder information on repository properties, and adding some additional requirements. Most of the subsections we already had, under eight, one, two, three, through subsection 10. We did add subsections one and two where bidder, if they're not an individual, if they're a corporation or company, they have to provide the names of their officers and owners. And then ask whether any of those officers or owners have co-identification in their own name. So that would address the situation where an LLC comes forward and the owner's not identifying themselves with that particular owner has other co-identifications. So that's authorized by the changes of it in the state law that happened.
So in a repository, if there's just an LLC, it doesn't mistreat the present LLC?
Normally it does, but sometimes.
That's a, this would require them to.
Same with a corporation, if they came along, you know, corporate officers, and would have to be identified. And then, under subsections C and D, if, the way I drafted it, if a property has an existing structure, we're requiring the appearance of a bidder at the caucus meeting, where it's only presented that. If it's a vacant block, the owner may appear, but does not have to. You know, if you, if you all want me to change that to require the appearance of a bidder, whether it's a vacant property where it has a structure on it, I can do that. But I think on the vacant land, when those come before council, it's. But I think on the vacant land, uh, when those come before council, it's pretty, you know, kind of pretty clear. We're not worried about dilapidating the structure. It's a piece of land, so, um, but the way this is drafted, if the owner does not appear, um, you can deny it on, on that basis. That, that's part of the changes of the state law.
Is, is this gonna be ready for Thursday?
It is ready.
It is? Okay. Questions? Thank you for doing this. Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, orange on the table, uh, and if that's for our review, there's none. There are no condition use requests, none, there's no discussion, there's no new business?
Oh, yeah, something.
Oh, go ahead, Dave, and I'm sorry.
Um, just, uh, I wonder where I am. Uh, one of the chairpersons for the June team celebration that, uh, this year it is being sponsored by the city of Newcastle, um, with other, other, uh, organizations in the city. June fourteenth and June fifteenth, uh, we are hosting, uh, the celebration at Cascade Park. Uh, June fourteenth will be five to nine and June fifteenth it will be from twelve to dusk with a fireworks show afterwards. Um, I will be dropping a flyer, uh, tomorrow on social media. Just wanted to put that on the radar. That's it.
Okay.
Friday, June fourteenth, Friday.
Okay. Under conditional use request, we have none, no for discussion, none under new business. We will be going into executive session for the issue under personnel, labor issue discussion, a surviving spouse, a non-uniform recovery. We will have a solicitor discussion. We have nothing under pending or threatened litigation, which is a good thing. Um, not, nothing under the contract annual negotiations. We do have one thing of a potential property acquisition, sale of lease of property. That will adjourn our meeting. Gentlemen, thank you very much. It's all.